I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Avon Board of Education. If everyone would stand with me and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to read our mission statement just to remind us all why we're here, put us in that space. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning, and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. I always feel that's the perfect segue into Avon Achievers as well. So I'm gonna call Jesse and Amy Ford. Amy, are you joining him as well? Or here for moral support? Okay, Amy Borio too. And Janessa, last check please. Jason Indemetica will assist.
Well, so periodically Pine Grove School has the opportunity to select an Avon Achiever. And some cycles, I would say, is the best way to describe it. Amy and I might sit and talk for a very long time, trying to decide because we're a very talented staff, so it's not always an easy decision. But this time when it came up, and it was our turn again, and the calendar reminded us, it was one of the easiest decisions that I've ever done. And that's because there are lots of positions that have a big impact in the school. And there are some that if you have the right person in the position, it can make all the difference. And I think Janessa is clearly one of those people. As our reading consultant, she has a huge impact not only on the climate and the culture of our building, but just as an instructional co-leader as well. We've gone through quite a bit the last couple of years, changing our instruction in the area of reading and language arts. And I think in her role from an instructional standpoint, students who struggle with reading, but also as a coach and a colleague, that there's always a line out her door in the morning and the afternoon with her peers there looking for a little bit of extra help with how they can reach that student that they've been struggling to reach. And so for all those reasons, I know he wants to add some sentiments as well.
I just wanted to say that when she talks about her job, she says that the hardest part is balancing being a coach and teaching groups, small groups of students. And I think the best thing that you do is coach and teach smaller students. This is, you do that so beautifully, both at that. I mean, you know, you could pick one or the other and say, "Oh, you're so better at this." You do both at that so, so well. The staff sees you well, and students first do. They absolutely love you in your room. So we're so happy to have you. We're doing both at that.
Quick story. Couple of years ago, when Janessa joined us, she came to meet with me for, I don't know, it was a quick meeting that turned into like two hours or something like that. I said, "Okay, here's the following things you have to do. You have to help us improve our reading instruction and clean up our bookroom." And she's done both of those things. And in fact, you know, we have a lot of resources as a school. But if they're not organized well, and if they're not teacher-friendly to use, then they're just that, a resource. But Janessa did a wonderful job, just right off the bat in terms of getting into a new role, but also taking on that challenge. So if you're at Pine Grove School anytime soon, come by and see our bookroom because it's thriving now because of the work. So thank you. I know that wasn't easy to do when we first started with the education. Janessa, for all those reasons, and any more, I promise I keep it for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the work you've done.
So now can I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's regular monthly meeting minutes from February 26, 2019?
So moved.
Houston moves, or I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All agree? No extensions or opposition? Okay. Next is communication from the public. Is anyone here that would like to speak to the board at this time? All right. Well, thank you for joining us in the audience. It's nice to have you. Items of information proposals. So now we are going to move to a summary of the district test results, the Smarter Balance Assessment, Connecticut SAT School Day Assessment, and Advanced Placement Participation and Results. So Dr. Nessel Rusek, I'll turn it over to you.
So good evening. Hey, we're gonna give you a short summary of our 2018 results for, as Deb shared, the Smarter Balance summative assessments, which is in grades three through eight. Our Connecticut SAT School Day assessment, we administer that in grade 11. Our AP results. And the Next Generation Science Standards Assessment was administered last year in grades five, eight, and 11. But it was a field test, so there are no results for it for last year. But there will be results this year as we will be administering it later this school year. So we're gonna start this evening with the Smarter Balance. That's the first page. Okay. Sorry, something on this screen was pulled to that, so I apologize. So Jody Kuzinski is joining me this evening, and she will walk you through the Smarter Balance summative assessments to begin with, and those are on page nine in your packet. Good evening. As most of you know, the Smarter Balance Assessment is Connecticut's mastery examination for students in grades three through eight in the areas of ELA and math. Term the mastery examination because those are the words that are in our Connecticut general statute, that all students are required to take a mastery examination in reading, writing, and math in grades three through eight and then in 11th grade. So the Smarter Balance Assessment is the assessment that the state collected and started administering in 2015. So you see we have results since that date, since that year's administration. The Smarter Balance Assessment is aligned to and measures the essential and grade-appropriate skills that are articulated in the Connecticut Core Standards. So as you took a look at the scores that we've added for 2018, the scores that are presented here are percents of the students, both in ELA on the first chart and on the bottom one, mathematics, that scored at level three or above. Level three is considered goal as state of Connecticut. Last year I reported to you that there, when you look at these scores and you try to look for trends and ways to summarize them, that there was more variability across grades and cohorts in three and five. But our scores really level off and move upward in grades six through eight. And you could say the same, pretty much the same for it as we added the scores for 2018. However, I'd like to point out a couple of things of note. There were upward movements in most grades in math. So if you're looking at one set of students to another, that are different students, not a cohort. But our cohort data is strong as well. In ELA, four out of five of our cohorts had greater percents at goal this year than they did last year. So cohort data is read diagonally. So if you're looking at, so the one in ELA that didn't show an advancement was our 2017 cohort in third grade to fourth grade. But if you go down in 2017 and look at our grade four ELA, those same students that took it in 2017, 76% met goal. And diagonally down in grade five, 78% met goal. So when you're looking at cohort data, in ELA, four out of five of our cohorts showed a greater increase. And in math, three out of five of our cohorts, cohorts, excuse me, showed a greater percent meaning goal.
Could I ask a question regarding the numbers? What's the standard deviation? What's a meaningful difference?
I'd have to look at the interpretive guide for that, which is on the state website, to be able to look at that.
Because like 62 for grade five mathematics just strikes me as a lower number. And then the question I have is that a meaningfully lower number?
So I was gonna bring that up later in terms of grade five. But yes, so grade five historically from the initiation of 2015 with the assessment, has been a lower, in mathematics, has been a lower performance across the state. So when you look at it in comparison to our other grade levels, it does stand out as significant. And I would probably term it significant, but you know, in a statistical manner to look at that. I mean, I'm not sure if that is significant or not. Like you're saying with standard deviations. I feel it is. And it has been something that we've looked at across the years and continue to work with the building administration and teachers to look at ways to. So you understand that the test, well, we understand that the test has determined one way to measure those essential skills.
Right.
And somehow ourselves and others seem not to perform as well in grade five. But you'll notice a considerable rebound of those same exact students in grade five. So if you look at the cohort data from last year, where 69% of the students in math scored at goal. And now in those same students now in sixth grade, 79% met a goal.
Right. And the same thing with the 2016 jumped up to 67. 2017 is now doing better, 2018. But it's just a little worrisome that it seems to be, shall we say, a permanent eddy in the flow of our educational stream.
Yes. And you would think that perhaps the State Department and the Smarter Balance Consortium would look at that to see if that stands out as deviation for them as well. But there are school districts that have made progress in that area. And I think, you know, not many and not terribly significantly, but I think it's worth continuing to look at. It is also only one score and one way to measure our students' growth and skills against the Common Core standards. But it is, I would consider it significant. But to answer your question directly, I would have to look that up.
Okay.
If I can just follow up on that. I'm sorry.
And there are other ones that like, you know, if you take, you know, grade four ELA 2015, they go from 75 to 78, to 75 to 78. And other classes seem to be doing better. They're usually in the low 80s. Once again, I don't know if that's significant or not. And I wouldn't want to say that that leads to the conclusion that they're harder to teach as a group, because I think that would be unfair. But I'm just wondering, how do we take this data and fix it so you guys can do a better job, assuming this is a metric that we care about, that you can do a better job to perform on the metric? So what can we do to support you? And you can get back to me later.
Yeah, I can. I would like to do that.
Okay.
I think in terms of, I do think we could do, spend more time looking at some additional measures that the state has more recently given to us as far as, you know, growth measures for students, and set goals individually for students. And I think as we start to working individually in those kind of areas, hopefully that would improve your performance for students.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, thank you. I just wanna follow up with the fifth grade because it was actually a question I asked about last year. And it stands out across the board. Now, you said that you see that same dip statewide?
You definitely have seen it statewide across the four years, although in recent years, more, last year, this year, I probably noticed it more this year. There are some schools that are getting up into the higher 70s where that was very rare, and maybe even the low 80s some other times.
Is it, also I'll ask the same question I asked last year. Is it a curricular issue? Is that, do we need to take a look at the fifth grade curriculum and make sure that we are instructing every part of all the topics they're assessing?
I would think that we have started to look at that and we will continue to. But I can't imagine that it's not a place where we can make an impact. There must be some disconnect, even if it has to do with the type of questions and how we're measuring the same kind of proficiency of that standard and then how they measure it.
Just because we've seen this history, we're not happy with those results, even though they bounce back. I just, if we don't do anything, we're not gonna get anything changed out of it. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Deb?
No, go ahead, I was trying.
So I remember a few years ago when these Common Core standards that this is based off of came out. I think they promised better and higher achievement than prior to their adoption. I know our school district spent, if I remember, I wasn't on the board then, but I remember a number around $300,000 to implement the standards and to do the testing and all of that. So just wondering, I know the standards came with their own test, so we don't have a baseline to measure how achievement, learning, really improved or didn't improve, stayed the same. Do we have anything to say students are doing better? They're learning more? Any sort of opportunity to look into that? Any transparency around that?
I think one of the ways that we identify their track to achievement with students, and again, identifying that with the variability in grades three through five, we did as a school district come out extremely strong in the very first year. If you look at our grade three ELA students, a very strong performance. One of the top, probably in the, I don't remember exactly, but I think it was in the top five of the state. And since then, hasn't been that high. But what has been consistent, as we see our students grow as students and learners, that they, when they have their ultimate measure, which is their 11th grade score, they're solidly up at the top in higher percentiles. So as a metric of showing that. So when you think about the Connecticut Core Standards and their implementation into our curriculum, they were adopted, I believe, in 2010. We had a couple of years to kind of, you had like a couple of years to get fully aligned with your curriculum. And this, we had one year of the field test. By 2015, we're testing them. I do feel that these test results and showing positive growth up through the sixth, seventh, and eighth does measure that we are meeting this higher level achievement. That's not to be said, as we were missing, looking at that there are subgroups that we need to continue to pay attention to and make sure that they're growing at the appropriate rate as well.
Yeah, so there's no way to compare against how our students achieved prior? So I think we've been fair and given enough time to the Common Core standards to fully be implemented. But I guess we'd wanna see that what they promised us, higher achievement, better learning, actually occurred. And I'm hearing it's impossible to tell if our students from 12 years ago were actually achieving better in education than they are currently.
It's hard to tell because it's two different sections that they've never aligned for that comparison.
There might be some opportunity to measure that when you look at the finished product. When the students take the SAT scores, when they're closer to finishing high school, those are scores you can compare over time. And that's not the greatest comparison, and it only measures the end product. It doesn't quite explain how we got there. But at least you have students taking a similar test over an extended period of time. So you should be able to see some trend there. If everything was working better because of Common Core, then sooner or later it should show up in those tests.
But those tests were also adjusted. The people who were the architects behind Common Core eventually moved to the board, and they are running the SAT as well.
So it's not quantitative, but there certainly is qualitative data or expression around, notably, our math teachers in the middle school have made reference and have promised specifically to me that the students that they are seeing in their classrooms are more prepared and are more fluent with the math standards. So it's extremely, you know, qualitative and, you know, certainly no way I measured, but it is an experience that they've seen.
I guess just a general theme is how do we hold people accountable when they come to us and have us implement things that? I remember the effort your team has put on during those years. Was that effort worth it? We just, I guess we'll never know. Thank you.
So as we shift to this slide here, because I think that opens us from yet. This table exclusively shows student performance from 2018. It displays the percent of students by performance level. Smarter Balance Assessments and all of our state assessments now, including, I believe the way the state reports the Connecticut School Day SAT, has four level performance levels. And as I stated earlier, level three is meets grade level expectations. Level four is exceeds grade level expectations. And so when you look at this chart, the last column is what's reported by the state, those students, you know, the one on the slide, first slide I spoke to. But this shows the breakout over levels. And again, I spoke to the idea that yes, the majority of our students, this is, if you were to put this on a graph, is skewed towards the upward side of the achievement, which is great to see, but we need to make sure that we're paying attention to all parts of this course. But what I'd like to pay attention to today to say, some notable scores are, and some celebrations are, that grade six showed a sizable increase in both ELA and math from 2017 to 2018. While the scores aren't on this screen, the 2018 ELA score at 84.7% was a 75 in 2017. And on the math slide, with a 78.8% at or above level three was a 67 last year. So those are really, those are statistically kind of strong increases. When you look at all of the scores, scores are somewhat stable in most grades, fluctuating less than 2%, either up or down when you look across the years. With the exception of grade five, which we just spoke to.
Grade four mathematics, level two. Okay, 22%, 23% right.
But it is still something to pay attention to. Although last year we were at 71%. So there's, at least we didn't lose more losing ground from grade rated. But yes, certainly that's something to pay attention to in that column. And you know, we will continue to look at not only grade five, but all of our grade levels and how we can continue to increase performance in all of our students academically. So each year we, to show some perspective outside of ourselves, but maybe not too far out of ourselves, because we're looking at two different reference groups, the district reference groups A, which we are not a part of. You can see the district listed on the left. And then DIRG B, which we are a part of that 20 other, 19 other school districts or regional school districts. As you look at these scores, just to note, and again, you don't have the reference of seeing in 2017. But when you look across the bottom and you compare ourselves to both, well, not look at the bottom for a minute. If we look at all of the schools represented on this page, we are, in ELA, we are 12th overall. When you look at all of our grades, so the final column of both of those charts, in DIRG A and B. If you start to look for comparisons across the bottom, compared to DIRG A, our third grade and our grade eight maintained their ranking within, in comparison, at five out of eight and two out of nine. Grade six made a significant increase. We were seven out of nine last year in DIRG A, and now we're four out of nine with our score. For comparison to DIRG B, again, in grades three and in grades eight, we maintained our position of three out of 20 and one out of 19. And we made a significant improvement in grade six. We were 10 out of 20 in DIRG B last year, and we are now two out of 20. When you look at the percent of students who met goal or above in the area of ELA. Similarly, in math, we are up a few places. We are ninth overall when you compare ourselves to DIRG A and B, our overall all grades. And in ELA, we maintained our positions in grades seven and eight. And we showed increases in grades three, four, and six. Comparing ourselves to DIRG A. Comparing ourselves to DIRG B, we maintained again being first in DIRG B in mathematics in grade eight. We're second out of 19 in grade seven. We increased from last year being 12 out of 20 in sixth grade math, and now one out of 20. And then again, in third grade showing strongly, six out of 20, when we were 11 out of 20 last year. So again, to show some relation to other districts and how their movement has been. There are areas where we are fluctuating back and forth. But if you look in the area of mathematics, in more grades than not are making increases. We made increases from 17 to 18. So now we're gonna go from grades three to eight, right up to 11. This is on page one in your packet, the Connecticut SAT School Day. The Connecticut School Day, if you recall, the first administration was in 2016. Prior to that, students took SAT outside of the school day. Now it is the state assessment for our students. We've had a small fluctuation of approximately 1% up in ELA and down in math this year, that little bit of fluctuation. And when we look at the percent of students by the achievement level, those in level three and four have met or exceeded goal. So approximately 90% of our students are at goal in math, in ELA, excuse me, and about 79% in the area of mathematics. When we compare ourselves with DIRG A and B, DIRG A, we're four out of eight in English language arts. And in DIRG B, we are two out of 19. So we made some nice growth in this area. Last year, we were eight out of eight in DIRG A and four out of 19 in DIRG B. So again, some nice growth in those areas. In mathematics, we are three out of eight in DIRG A this year. Last year, we were four out of eight. Again, a small increase in our standings. And then last year, we were one out of 19, and we maintain that one out of 19 in DIRG B this year. So in terms of statewide, we are fifth in the state for ELA and third for mathematics for our SATs. Any questions on SAT before I move on to the... The Advanced Placement. These are pages 27 and 28 in your packet. This is too much of an eye test with the little prints across the room. But we tried to give you a five-year overview of our AP class participation and exams. So in the 2017-18 school year, we offered 20 AP courses for our students to take, or we had the enrollment to run 20 AP courses. This is probably a better way to state it. As we look at this slide, in a five-year period, we've gone from 475 students taking an AP class, with 440 of those taking the exam, to this past year of 730 students taking an AP class and 640 of them participating in the exam. Between 2016 and 17, and last year, 2017, 2018, we had an increase of 59 students taking the courses and 40 more students taking the exams. You will see in terms of our students that scored a three or higher, a decrease. We went from 93% down to 85%. So that is an 8% decrease in our success at the three or higher rate. We also, if you recall, have been pushing students to count themselves. And with that, sometimes comes, you know, a solid two on the AP that doesn't meet the three. So sometimes as you increase that percentage rate, our, you know, ratings of the three and higher go down a little bit. When we compare ourselves to the other DIRGs, which we always like to do, for the Avonabes, and we live in the Bs, and we always do that double comparison, you'll notice in terms of the percentages of exams taken with scores of three, four, or five, we placed at 85% for the 17-18 school year, again, which was a slight decrease from the previous year. So as with any of these assessments, as Jody mentioned, these are one assessment, one data point for us to look at. But we do look at them very carefully and analyze them at our level with the buildings, and the teachers look at them. And then we also look at those in conjunction with all of our other assessments, our universal screenings we do on a regular basis, our end-of-unit assessments, so that we're looking at all the available data points so that we can continue to improve our instruction, the opportunities for students, and also to assess, is our curriculum where it needs to be in the different grade levels moving forward. Open it up to any questions? Open it up to any questions.
Paul asks some questions.
Jay has a question.
Oh, sorry.
First of all, thank you very much for all the data and the information, very helpful to look at. I know it shows we have some very smart students, some staff that has helped them succeed. In looking at our SAT scores, we have, you know, some of the highest in the state, but in looking at our participation in the core AP classes, we don't have a high percentage. And if you look in your chart, we did increase AP participation, but it's by adding courses, so we're not increasing our participation in calculus, English, in the core classes. So my question is, why do you think we have some of the best performing students in all these tests you presented tonight, but we don't have high participation rates in the AP classes advice?
Well, I think, you know, that's something that we have talked about a lot and we continue to work with, you know, the high school and parents to, and our staff, to encourage the students to take those higher level courses with the APs, and, you know, we have been slowly increasing those numbers. Yes, we've added a few courses, but not a large number within the last two years, not just three years ago that we added three additional courses. So these numbers are increasing, this year is a little bit lower, but we also had a large senior class that graduated and a, you know, smaller number here at the high school this year. But I think it's something that we just need to continue working at with the high school now that we hopefully have some steady leadership in place to continue that movement forward.
So I know when students take the PSATs, many if not most of our students receive a letter from the college board stating that they are likely to succeed if they enroll in an AP class. I'm sure you've seen that letter and you know how that data is calculated. I understand that there is a program the college board offers for free called AP Potential? Do we subscribe to that?
I believe we do.
Okay. And how we use that data to see if those students are then enrolling in the AP classes that they're recommended or through that program?
That we need to check with the high school and the faculty.
Sure. I appreciate the analysis, but I would just ask one question of, now that we have all this analysis, what's your takeaway? What do you plan to do with this?
Well, I think, you know, each assessment's a little bit different. We take it back really to look at, as I mentioned earlier, do we have certain students, so the students that, for smarter balance, that are in those lower bands, we look at, you know, and SAT, are they getting the supports they need? Do we need to put a plan in place, some tutoring, some intervention to assist those students? We also, a couple years ago, if you recall, put some other courses in the high school to help shore up some of those areas, so are we matching our students? So it really gets down to looking at student names who are in those, you know, lower bands and making sure that we're giving them the supports they need while looking at the students in the other bands and saying, what do we need to continue to move them forward? It's really looking at the patterns in our instruction of how do we cluster, for lack of a better word, our students. Instead of whole group instruction, we're doing a lot more of the central work, you know, that is specific to students, where the teacher works with small group, other groups are working on different things, they rotate through. So we're trying to grow the practice in that area too, that it's not kind of one size fits all within the classrooms.
And is that working now? Or is it too early to tell?
I think it's working where it's working, but we still need to...
Somewhat tautological there?
Yeah. But we also need to continue to grow some people's practice because it's a very different way of teaching. Some people are very comfortable with that, and others, you know, it is a different way of teaching, and while their students are progressing and moving along, it may not be the same for the class next to them. So as we have students that are growing, we have staff that are growing in teaching in different ways now too.
So how is that analysis done? Does the computer spit out, oh, you should look at Joey two? Or is that something that you manually have to go through or just trying to understand?
What I would add to your, as a response to that question, things that we do and things that we continue to do, we could continue to do more of, the smarter balance assessment scores, as far as their impact on instruction, in comparison to other assessments we have, it's much smaller. So it's one of those assessments that fits the requirement of a federal and state statute. It does show us longitudinal and progress over time of our students, which is also impactful for us. It does show us, if there are areas that we need to look at our curriculum to look more deeply to strengthen, but I would say that we've continued to encourage and expose teachers to other assessment types, such as using interim assessments that are provided to us through the smarter balance assessment suite as well, which are smaller moments that are strand or content specific. So instead of doing all fifth grade math, you could take a ten to twelve-question assessment, interim assessment on only fractions, and it will give you information that can inform your instruction tomorrow, because it scores it for you and you get the scores instantly. So those type of data points used either as pre-assessment or post-assessment will definitely influence our instruction more, and I would encourage us to use them more.
And so we're not doing that fully yet, or we're working on that?
We are, there are definitely teachers that are using it. Last year was the first year it was introduced. Professional development was provided to all students in grades, teachers of students in grades three through eight. Every classroom was required to give one in ELA and one in math to kind of get them, to expose them as well as their students to it. And this year, it's really meant to be a very flexible tool, so it's not something I would ever recommend we said unless we saw a significant need of one population to say, everyone should give this on October tenth and for this reason. Teachers and instructional teams should look at them and use them with all students, some students, where they want to get information to inform instruction. So it's a way to differentiate and a way to meet needs of students, but it's one, it's one part of this assessment system that we could more fully take advantage of.
And how do we encourage teachers to do it?
We encourage to do it through our interaction, our teaching learning with the schools, the administrative teams at the schools, continue to...
Do you like to send them reports and say, hey, you ought to look at this, or?
We attend team meetings and have them remind them about that. Like last year, I spent a lot of time with them and modeling how to score them and how to use it. This year, we gave them a little bit more room to play with them, and so when we have instructional coaches or coaches like Janessa, who was here tonight, or we have, last year we had Mary Lebowski, who was the instructional coach in areas of mountain science, and this year we have Anna Harris, who has influenced those instructional teams through conversations. We encourage those staff members to use them as, to keep bringing them up. But certainly, I think it's the collective responsibility of the administrative team to kind of pony that skill and suggest me.
And does the, do the data points here affect the student's success plan? And is that shared with parents or students for each individual student?
Of the assessment we just spoke of?
Yes, all of these assessments, and do they grind through and say, oh, Joey would help, you know, with a little bit more of this, or Joey, because I'm picking on it tonight?
Right, sure. I don't believe the types of scores that you would, that you would, you would get from these type of assessments would end up on a student's success plan or on any type of permanent record, because they are so, they're like, they're very, I like to say, the expiration date on them is very short. If you don't use this data now, it's really less impactful, whereas this is something that you're going to get on the same student, Joey's going to get this every year at the same time, there's going to be some fence posts that show that he's making progress or not. So that's telling for a student, and, but to really inform instruction and make decisions of what Joey will get versus what, you know, Suzie will get, you should be using, in addition to assessments like this and our unit assessments, formative assessments along the way, teachers definitely do this in other ways. They use exit slips, they do shorter, shorter kind of check-ins or quizzes, but to answer your question that you asked about this, I do think those interims can be more powerful for us.
How do we help you to do that? And you can get back to me if you can't answer.
Sure. But in terms of the plans, I just want to add on that really quickly, the student plan, if you come up with a plan for the student and, you know, we're going to target, say, fractions in that area, we talk about how we do it, how we're going to collect the data, that is all, you know, we inform the parents, and then they also, with the report card, we see a separate sheet that details the progress in that area, so those conversations are continuous.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you again for the information, for sharing it. Just a thought, what opportunities do we have at the younger grades to help students get to a point where, you know, some of the fellow board members are very passionate about having more AP participation? What can we do in the earlier grades where there's potentially more opportunity, where there's, I think, students who may be able to move faster and learn more, and maybe encourage them to take risks perhaps?
So the answer I just gave about, you know, what do we do, what quote test we, I think you can give that same answer to why we would do that. We would use these kind of formative assessments, pre-assessments, to identify areas that we can compact curriculum for student and differentiate so that the students who are sitting in front of us that don't need the full fourteen days of instruction for fifth grade fractions can, can, once they demonstrate this on day four, because we know this is what's necessary, might be able to do X instead. And so how do we, how do we continue to strengthen that practice?
So that's being implemented currently?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting these summaries together. I do want to just call attention to the AP participation going up. It's exciting. I mean, we did add new courses, and it would be nice, of course, to still see progress in the core classes being offered. I think we all agree that each student taking that risk into a post-secondary experience prior to leaving us is what we'd like them to go through for the grit purposes, and part of our acceptance of that has to be acknowledging that if our percentage does drop a little bit from the threes and up, it's because more kids are taking chances, and so we need to see that as progress, and I think that's exciting. So thank you for sharing that, and we'll just keep moving forward, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
So now the student rep report. Addison, it's you again, Noah Mir.
Yeah, okay. So as we kind of just discussed, the classroom SAT is going to be held next week, so all students are here after that. Spring sports started yesterday, so that's been a little bit of a shift in the school dynamic. And then the last thing I have is just that there's a college fair on April first at six thirty, and I know a lot of people are going to be at that, so that's good to have juniors involved in that, that reminds us early on. Thank you.
Thank you, Addison. All right, now our financial report, Ms. Mashad.
I didn't have the pleasure of having a finance committee meeting this month, so I'm just going to go through just a few bullet points so everyone's not caught up, if you don't mind. The change between...
Could you use a mic, it would be helpful?
The change between January and February's financial report is minimal, it was just under a half a percent, so ten point nine eight to now ten point five five on income balance. Again, we are below where we were in last year, same time, about a thirteen percent on income balance, so we're still exploring for income at this point, which is always a good trend to see. Additionally, I wanted to make note, we're hoping to have that money transportation payment made in that last week of February due to some reconciling issues between us and the company, which has said it's been rectified, that check couldn't be cut that last week, but it has since been cut in March, but I just wanted to bring up to speed on that. That second payment was for eight hundred and fifty-four thousand and change, bringing our total contract and transportation expense to date to one point nine million, which is corporate for where we are, leaving us the last payment to reconcile in June, as we all know. So it should hover somewhere around less than one hundred thousand dollars is our estimate at this point, so we're on track. Additionally, I wanted to update board that it is that time of year, all schools have been asked to review every open purchase order in conference. We're looking for anything that might be backordered like we normally do. If we're closing up a purchase order and canceling that order, we're making the appropriate purchases to close out the year and perhaps stop potentially for next year, depending on need. You'll also see more transfers coming through as the variances are rectified following their request for purchase. I think that's sort of the annuals, and my apologies for those various transfers that are... And then finally, I just wanted to bring light, I'm sure that you all know, we didn't receive the four percent population for the open choice program this year, we are the three percent, which is fine, you know, that's what we budgeted at a conservative level. We did just receive word yesterday that the early beginnings grant will be awarded again this year. Again, to be conservative, we did not budget for those funds because it's really an unsure revenue annually, so what we're looking for full confirmation on is about ninety thousand dollars, which has since been released to CREP, and CREP will be making payment on that. Again, we don't have full confirmation, but that's what's expected by the last report I did see, so I'm going to try and bring you a request for a supplemental as soon as possible, as you know, I cannot request a supplemental from the board, or committees, and then to the town until we actually receive funds, so hopefully by April.
Are there any questions? Thank you. All right, committee and liaison reports. So Jackie is not with us tonight to talk about curriculum and professional practices. The minutes are included in the packet. I'm not sure if anyone on the panel logged in if you wanted to add anything, but does anybody have any questions? All right, then we will move to finance with Jackie.
So as Heather explained, we did not meet this month, but we are scheduled to meet a different time and day than usual because of the school break, so we're meeting Thursday, April fourth at six p.m.
Thank you. Negotiations, Jason?
Nothing to report this month.
You're right, thank you. Policy, Laura?
So this month, because of all the way the schedule played out, we actually aren't going to be meeting until Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, and on that agenda will be administration of education, sexual harassment policy, and dress code.
Thank you.
And you will see also in these, in the packet, is the suspension and expulsion process policy.
Liaison reports, board rep to Curriculum and Professional Development Council, I did attend that day. I took some notes, just as bullet points to give you a basic summary. It was a full day of discussion. What was interesting is a lot of times you hear the buzzword twenty-first century skills kind of thrown out there, so they actually took the time to define what that really means, so that was brain tingling a bit to kind of narrow that down. They also looked a little closer at the SRBI process, improving our alignment with state requirements. We had a guest speaker come and discuss restorative practices and how, what that would look like within the school setting. I thought she did an excellent job. I think that's something that maybe you're looking into over time, but it was an exposure to staff as to what a possibility could be as a board, and we've discussed that over the past few years, so it was nice to see it introduced at the staff level. I think that's the basic crux. We did have a couple of classes that are coming up that you'll be discussing with us that were suggested, or the Mandarin and...
Those are in the packet.
Those are in the packet. So other than that, is anything you could think of, Donna? All right, thank you. Okay, board rep to Avon Board of Finance, David?
Okay, Board of Finance has not met since our last meeting, to my knowledge. Their next meeting is a, I believe, a budget workshop coming up on April first.
Are you verifying, are you good?
Yes, I'm good.
Excellent, thank you. All right, board rep to Avon Town Council, Jason?
Okay, so the town council met on March seventh. Similar to our last meeting, there was some brief discussion about the potential impact of the governor's budget proposal with the teacher pension cost shifts and things like that, so town council, some brief discussions on that. The council spoke about HB fifty-two forty-nine, which was the turf field bill we discussed here the last time. Are the town councils aware of the bill? I think the general consensus is it's probably not going anywhere, and if it did, the impression I got was that the council felt like, because our completion date falls before the date the law would become effective, it's not really a concern. The council is aware of it, I know we discussed that last time, particularly with Jeff and Houston asking me to make sure it was on the radar. The next town council meeting is April fourth. I will be out of town that night if anybody is looking for something to do. And then the turf committee, turf field committee has not met... And then the turf committee, turf field committee has not met since our last meeting. There's a meeting tomorrow night. The bids have come in, I think there were four, what they consider valid bids. And the expectation tomorrow night is that the committee will make a recommendation to the town council in terms of what contractor to use. So that's tomorrow at 7:00, I think downstairs in town hall.
Excellent, thank you. Board rep to Capital Aviation Education Council, that would be Jackie. I don't think that there were any updates from her. She had emailed, it didn't look like there was any information to share. So the chair's report, I don't have any update at this time. I'm happy to move to Dr. Carnamora for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So not much in the way of the hiring report. Have some resignations and we've been able to replace our nurses who had left that was a student-centered change, not one of the new nurses in any of our schools. Our enrollment, as you saw on page 38, again, I would say is steady. We are up four from last month for registrations and that still brings us to be four above where we began the year. So just continue to fluctuate back and forth as people are moving in and out of town. From the strategic planning standpoint, I mentioned in our last board meeting that we were starting to move forward with some of the work on other goals in our strategic plan. We talked about our English and Language Arts vertical team effort that we held the first meeting of last month. And this Thursday, correct, Dr. Mayorman?
Next Tuesday.
This Thursday, we will be meeting for the first meeting in our social emotional learning work group that I mentioned for the last board meeting and at the Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee. That is a group of volunteers from across the district. We are meeting after, primarily after hours. I was looking to-
Thank you.
I was looking to reduce the amount of time that we have our faculty and staff out of buildings with students because we always try to do that, number one, but also trying to respect the time of our faculty. And so we're meeting from 3:00 to 5:00 with a large group of volunteers that represent all facets of the organization from pre-K to 12, from secretarial staff to professionals, nurses, administrators, teachers, counselors will all be at the table to begin having a conversation around those goals. We're looking at how we are educating the whole student from the social emotional perspective. So we're excited to begin that conversation again. And Donna, you were telling me, what about next Tuesday?
Oh, I thought you were saying that was the second one.
That's the second meeting for the English Language Arts team. Also, I just want to take a moment, Addison, I'm glad you're still here. Surely maybe Addison can help me with that? So this is probably a fairly little-known fact, sometimes I call these Hallmark holidays when they're the personal kind, like Valentine's Day. Or I kid my mom and say grandparents' day is another one of those. She doesn't think that's funny, but little-known fact, I think, that March is Board of Education Appreciation Month.
Is that just in Avon or wider wider place?
No, that is, that is, at least statewide, if not nationwide. These guys, thank you. Not me, and we'll hang out in jackets. So, but in all seriousness, I wanted to take a moment, these are, you know, just a token, I will say, because what I think a lot of folks also don't know is that you as Board of Education members are not compensated for your service.
We're not?
Only once your term ends.
Your check is lost in the mail. Call, call other about that.
That explains a lot.
That explains a lot. And also, I think, and I'm often asked this question, as I'm sure many of you are, whether or not you're paid in any fashion for the tremendous amount of work that you do as a member of this board, not only at these meetings where people see us live streaming and publicly, there are a lot of other public meetings that you attend that are not as well-attended, negotiation sessions, Curriculum and Professional Practices Committees, Policy Committees, Finance Committee meetings, the countless hours you put into hiring superintendent, for example. A lot of work that you do behind the scenes, sitting on CPDC, like Bogdan and Deb have been as of late, that people do not know you do to help support our school district. And so we just wanted to take a moment tonight to recognize you for all of that work. I will point out that this is not special to Avon. There are 166 public boards of education in the state of Connecticut, which serve well over half a million students in public schools in Connecticut. And no public Board of Education members are paid for their service in this state. Although I think we often hear that the compensation, if you will, that you received is, is the public service that you do. And I think often, as Houston just joked, but it is at the end of your term, maybe, that you look back and realize more of what you've done than when you were in the thick of it. And sometimes I know the work is not much fun that you engage in with us. So it's fitting tonight, what we'll have later on the agenda, because I promise I didn't make this up, it really is Board of Education Appreciation Month. And this is one of the oldest forms of democracy I think we have in the, in the state of Connecticut. You are all elected by the citizens in this community to represent their interests and the interests of our students. And I think that in doing this, you have taken on a huge role to serve this community, whether or not people in the community have children. You are still serving every member of this community with your service here on our Board of Ed. So on behalf of the entire civil district, I thank you for the dedication and the hard work. Thank you. That is all I have for you tonight.
I think it's the first time this board has ever celebrated that before, so that is very nice. Thank you very much. Nice surprise. Okay, so moving to the consent calendar, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Houston approves, so I have a second?
Second.
Second by David?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions passes unanimously. And now we move on to new business. So I'm sure some of the people who have come tonight are here for this discussion. It seemed that based on the tenor in the community and conversations that we are aware of and questions that have come our way, it was time for the board to just be really clear on how we felt about the proposed legislation regarding regionalization of schools. So I wanted this to be an opportunity for us to once again share how we feel about it, just so that there's no more confusion out there as to where we stand. We did have members submit testimony when they had the hearing. I know myself, Houston, David, Jeff. Six, yes, Houston, you're always on top of that, so that's great. So we do participate in that manner. I know that we did have a brief discussion last month where we came to realization that we all agree that we oppose the idea of it. We don't think it would be helpful to our students, but I wanted other board members, if you had any other comments that you wanted to share, just so that there's no confusion in the community.
I think just so the community knows, until the JF deadline passes, which is the deadline for each committee to report a bill out favorably, and there is one that somehow ended up in the Planning Committee, which makes me a little concerned because someone can play with the deadline, because that one's got a later deadline than the Education Committee. But the deadline, I believe, is April 1st for the Education Committee. So it is anticipated, based upon the legislators that I've spoken to, that it's not going to happen this year. Might it happen in future years? I don't know. We can't control that and we'll worry about it if and when it comes around. But the odds of this happening this year are very small. You can't say zero, but the testimony I saw, that's all available, and all of our testimony to the extent we submitted, and I believe at least six of us submitted testimony, is available online. And for these two bills, the written testimony was at least 300 pieces from members of the public, zero were favorable. So literally, every person that submitted written testimony said, "Not on my watch." Now, does that stop a legislator from voting to the contrary? The answer is no, but I think that we can rest assured that it's not going to happen this time around.
I think what my concern, though, Houston, and you raised it, it's not just those two bills, right?
Right, because they're like six.
And, and I almost feel like there's a shell game going on in Hartford, in the sense that they put out the first two bills and they get all that reaction and, oh, nope, ball's not under that shell. And now all of a sudden, we have this one tomorrow. As you said, it's not in the Education Committee. I think when it came to 7/38, when that testimony, when I was all part of it, some of them have not gotten the traction that the initial two have. And I, and I do feel it's important that we as a board take a stance, whether it comes out and goes to the General Assembly or not, I'm just afraid that we're going to miss something. And I think while, yes, individuals have stood up and provided that testimony, we as an organization, as a government body, also need to put our voice in because particularly in the regionalization, it impacts our very existence as a board. And I just feel like, are we missing something else? You look at the bill that's being proposed tomorrow, the regionalization's buried within it. It's not even the educational elements, not even written in the title. So I question what other bills have we may have missed. In addition, the other big difference between the bill we're seeing tomorrow and the two initial bills was is that this doesn't talk about forced regionalization, but incentivized. And it sort of wants to encourage, in fact, what is concerning is that it wants to create a commission to make recommendations that'll go for several years, right? And then there's no way that we will actually have an input in that process. So I get very concerned when I start hearing the states are talking about, well, we're not going to force regionalization, we're going to study it, play around with it, and maybe do an experiment. And I think we need to be, take a strong stance that we're just not going to tolerate any of it.
I, I hear you and one of the, first of all, probably you don't realize I have so little to do with my time, that I literally read the titles and purposes of every bill that's introduced in the General Assembly every year. I have done that since the mid-'80s, which shows a latent mental defect that will need to be addressed at some point. And, you know, one of the little pernicious ones is if you foul below a certain cap, I don't remember what the cap was, the ECS cuts out the superintendent's out, which I thought was, oh, how quaint, how amusing. And so I blasted them on that. I'm, I'm not sure which bill you're talking about tomorrow, we'll chat afterwards and we'll make sure that that's on my list of six or so that I've covered.
7192.
All right, good.
Can I clarify something too? So I think, Houston, you said that, you know, we shouldn't be too worried, but I remember I mentioned Common Core earlier and, you know, as far as testimony, it went to Hartford. Many, many people testified against it. People had T-shirts made out, people had gatherings, but the voice of the people was not heard in that instance. And we're living through it now with Common Core implemented many years ago. Just want to caution that.
No, no, I understand it's, no man nor their liberties are safe while the legislature is in session. And the legislature is in session. So, but I understand that there are all sorts of interesting political gimmicks that we can talk about that can be played with. I don't think any one person now has the power within the General Assembly to do that, but we can talk about that later. And certainly, A, Cave is watching it, certainly I'm trying to watch it. I assume all of you are trying to watch it. And if we find out something going on, we have the world's fastest communications between each other. It may exceed the speed of light and we will make sure that something gets done. If any one of us notices, it's, you know, there's no one of us that's going, oh, I'm not going to talk to anyone else. No, we'll bring it to all of our attention and I would ask you to do the reciprocal. But we don't need to run around saying our hair is on fire at the moment with what I'm suggesting.
No, but as, as the chair said before, I think we have an obligation to the community to let them know that we are officially watching it. We left it off last month as it was going to be an informal, right? Everyone just go write your personal testimony. But I think we have an opportunity, at least to assure the public, as a united nine board, we're watching this and we won't stand for it. And I think that's the importance of taking action on this this evening.
And I think when the time comes, if the time ever comes, that we would have the support of the other government boards in town, that being Board of Finance and Town Council, I think we would have their support when we need it. And should any of these bills make it out of committee, as I did my research in terms of where we could go, in terms of expressing our opposition against regionalization, we didn't have a lot of great strategic options at the Board of Education level, but Town Council and Board of Finance have some options. And we might want to discuss those, but only if there's a real threat on the table. Right now, Houston's information is the same information that I've received, that this is likely to just all die in committee. And if that's what happens this year, then all we really have to remember is that we'll be back at this next year and that we're going to need not just the boards, because to tell you the truth, the citizens who spoke out accomplished more than any of the boards can. When the parents showed up and all the other citizens came out of the woodwork to swarm on Hartford to testify, that, that got the message across. They can ignore us if they choose to, but they can't ignore all of you. So I hope everyone is prepared to do this next year if it comes down to that. And I hope none of this is adopted in any year.
And the superintendent might wish to make sure that one or more of our names are on the list of people that the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities suggests to the governor, or because apparently they're supposed to be something from a list. And so if we could put some of us on the list, then at least we could make sure that, while we may not get picked, there's the possibility for us being picked.
But you know, that's the type of move that makes me nervous, that there are going to be communities cut out of this discussion, picked by, by random by the governor. And that is what my concern is, that once the players are set at the table, anyone who doesn't have a seat at the table will not have an opportunity for say, and then someone else is deciding our fate here in Avon.
I've understood. And then the next step is we go to the public meetings, because they have to be done in public and it will be subject to the, to the FOIA. And so if we're really concerned about that, we can certainly be involved and get to that step. But I want to make sure, A, I agree with you. B, I think we should take steps to make sure that we aren't ignored. Dare I quote Hamilton, "I want to be in the brother."
Laura? So according to a recent report by the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, which was published on May 8th last year, Connecticut towns provide 56% of K through 12 public education revenues through property taxes, which is the fourth highest percentage contribution for property taxes among the 50 states. So in my opinion, for that reason alone, forced regionalization of educational services by the state would be a terrible idea, because it would take away local control from the local government. It would be one thing to suggest that small school districts should consider through incentives to consolidate, but even that, I think, is a dangerous path. In fact, in terms of looking at how we might originally share services, Avon Public Schools is already doing that through shared services. We also have a co-op men's ice hockey team with Farmington and Burlington, but to be clear, shared services is different than forced regionalization. About 10 years ago, the town of Avon actually hired a consulting group, the Matrix Consulting Group, to explore ways in which various administrative services could be shared or consolidated between the town side and the Board of Ed side, including but not limited to financial operations, facilities management, and human resources. And this is a live document, it's updated periodically, and I do believe that administrative leaders from both sides have worked very closely together to figure out where there might be appropriate ways that we could share resources, either within services internally or perhaps regionally. So to be clear, I am adamantly opposed to forced regionalization or incentivized regionalization of educational services, but I do think we need to keep on the table the possibility of talking about how we can explore ways to share services either internally, back and forth between us and the town side, or regionalizing with other communities around us. The summary in that report, which by the way is a really great report and explains the pros and the cons, the good, bad, and the ugly, you know, generalizing about regionalization is, is to oversimplify a very complex issue. The way public schools financed in Connecticut is complicated. There is a historical precedent of the local government being very powerful and very strong. If we're going to hold on to that, it's not going to be something that's going to easily go away. But I do think it's a conversation that's not going to go away. So I'm in favor of taking some type of action tonight. I do also think that we have to be careful that with every bill that comes along, we can't be making resolutions every month. This one is definitely an important one, but there are others as well.
In support of Laura's comment on shared- In support of Laura's comment on shared services, I have experience in the higher education portion of the state. And when we had shared service arrangements, the way you could tell whether or not it was about savings is that when we talked about shared services, those deals were small, finite, confined to a very specialized service, and they were measurable. And you knew if you were saving or not right away. To give you a comparison with some of what the state is proposing, for example, turning every school district into a tax district, all they did was create the obligation to print tax bills and duplicate the effort of the town tax collector. So is, are there savings coming from that? I would say absolutely not. But when we talk about smaller deals between, let's say, us and the town of Avon or us and neighboring communities for certain contracts, certain purchases, and so forth, when you do that on a small scale, you can save money. When you do that on a large scale, you run into unintended consequences, and the savings have a way of disappearing.
Dr. Do you have more?
Sure, yeah. So I haven't yet heard a compelling argument for how any of these laws would benefit our community. I also never heard of a compelling argument how Common Core, back then, would have benefited our schools, but that, again, didn't stop them. So, you know, I think Avon, over the many, many years, has been a great steward of its community and its resources. The state, I don't think we can say the same for. So for that reason, I agree with Laura. I think this is something that I also am very strongly against.
So for clarity, if the board is comfortable, we have it listed as possible action on the proposed legislation regarding mutualization of schools. I have crafted, along with input from other board members, and Houston, I got your note about that one.
I know, I circled it, you didn't make the change yet.
I did on mine.
Oh, okay.
I had already printed them when you sent the email. So if any other board members have any other things they'd like to adjust, my goal was to keep this clear and concise so the community just understood where we landed on this. If everybody's comfortable, just read it, okay?
Sure.
All right, resolved. The Avon Board of Education opposes any legislation concerning the forced regionalization of public schools. We recognize that we have been elected to serve on behalf of Avon students. We have an excellent school system that has attracted many families to our town. As a local Board of Education, we work together in a nonpartisan manner to provide the best possible education for students while upholding our fiscal responsibility to the community. Any forced outside authority over our schools would have a negative impact on the education of our students. So...
I'll move it if you want a motion.
I actually would like to add an amendment. I'd like to insert the word in forced regionalization, forced or incentivized regionalization.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment if you wanted a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, so if I have second, then are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. Now we move on to the proposal, which is very exciting. We're actually looking at a school calendar two years out, which I think will be another exciting thing for the community to enjoy. So Dr. Carnamal, if you want to walk us through this.
One, as we begin, thank you, Ms. Shu. As we begin, one edit that we will make on the new staff orientation. We want to leave those dates open, that seventeenth to the twenty-first at this point, because we are two years out, but we will be looking for that to be four, not five days in the future to coincide with our contract. So we will take care of that as we get closer, but we'd like to leave the time open from the seventeenth to the twenty-first. The rest, this is the same calendar that we discussed at our previous meeting, I believe, in January. One of the points of discussion was about when Passover fell, that in 2021 would be March twenty-seventh, beginning and ending on April third, for point of reference here.
Be a weekend.
Be a weekend, correct.
My, the comment just wasn't just set in care. I think it was that, but even, I think we were looking at that time, the April calendar, and I just was questioning why we had moved it so early. And the reference really was, is it always going to be based upon Good Friday and Easter? Because that was the case, why it was moved up to the second, right? Because April second's Good Friday that year?
This year it is April second, yes.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, I mean, yes.
Yeah, that was really what the question was, is that going to be a determination every year when?
I don't think we can say in advance that would be the determination of when. You know, as you know, that fluctuates kind of wildly. It sometimes happens as early as the end of March.
Well, that was my question in terms of why did we move that week earlier from the current calendar?
We were looking at the span of time. One of the other pieces, you know, we've had the conversations about how long the month of March is without the break. Later we get into April. This is another issue that we've considered. I looked at, you know, some of the calendars of others, so we made it relative to where it is this year. Otherwise, we could also have extended it out week to the twelfth, the twelfth to the sixteenth week, and let the Good Friday holiday stand alone and the, you know, end of Passover weekend there. One of the other things we were thinking, we had this conversation though, was also about the traveling from people returning. It was mentioned, not that we can always do a calendar around when any of us might be traveling, but it made sense for that also, both to break up the length of the month and the travel time for those holidays.
I can share with Houston, because I know what his argument's going to be. Just to let you know, the district that employs me as a teacher will start, the students will start after Labor Day next year.
And I think we should follow their lead.
As soon as I saw that schedule, I immediately thought of you, because I know you're going to bring that up here.
Now, I don't have to, since you handled it for me. Thank you for doing it, it was such a plug.
So would you like us to act on this?
Questions again, or comments?
I'll make the same comments I made last time. You know, I wasn't happy when the state required us to follow a certain calendar with certain days off, and that's when we, I think, lost our February vacation, and we shifted to an April. Looking at what's best for students, I still think something in March would be a more equal break, so it wouldn't be as long a timeframe without a break, but that's my opinion.
If it helps the superintendent, I would say that I don't feel obliged to vote for what the state tells me to vote for. Otherwise, my vote is meaningless. So if she were to feel strongly that she wants it to be different, I would, of course, support the superintendent.
And I appreciate that. I think, you know, one of the things we talk about when we start with in March, the discussion of a March break, is being, you know, the rogue district in the state that does do that, which, as I think someone brought up last time, does give us some issues with staffing in the schools because of the number of individuals who have children in other districts, which may or may not fall on the same week that we have off here. You know, I, for one, for example, don't have the same week off my own children as here, but I'd say it kind of depends on exactly what area people live in. When you go to a totally different week off, I think we would have a little bit of an issue with some of the staffing, that'd be the one issue. Also, as we mentioned last time, the testing window opens in March. We don't do our smart balance testing until May, but typically, for example, the SAT day is, as it is this year, sometime in March, third week typically. So it's just some of what we consider when we look at the March break. I think the other reason, to be perfectly honest, is the snow day factor. Because unfortunately, and knock on wood, because I hope it's not this year, we have had snow days well into March and April. And as you know, if we get too far into June, unfortunately, it has been the April break that the dates get removed from. And so if we go to a March week off, we lose that ability if more days come after that, just as another precaution, but... I'd be happy to have, you know, as an individual, the rogue week off, because I think we'd all get better travel deals.
College spring break.
Unless it was college spring break, but from an organizational standpoint, I think that's why it's still April.
I would just like to see consistency year after year, that's all. This week, this year, it's like the week of the twelfth. Next, the year after, it's the week of the fifth. I just, consistency is what I would just like to see year after year.
I can't speak for this year, as you know, but the next two, they are consistent.
Are they that early for the...
I don't have that one in front of me, but...
For nineteen-twenty?
This is twenty-twenty-one, but yes.
But I think, I thought, and I could be wrong, I thought the nineteen-twenty was that same week of the twelfth. But I think that was our conversation, that it was noticeably one week earlier. That's fine, it is what it is. I don't have a problem, per se, with this, just in general.
Understood. And as a reminder publicly that we are two years out, so we have plenty of time if the earth shakes in the meantime, just to have a guideline at least, I think, is good.
I think the community would appreciate it. They're always looking for the next year following, so I'm comfortable with moving to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Houston approves, moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, Houston. Jay as well? Okay, so two opposed.
I can vote against my motion.
And any incentives?
I was wondering why you moved it.
I was shocked, too.
Been figured out. May I ask a question? I know the reason. Is the March, is the March the primary concern you have?
No, Labor Day.
No, I know you, I thought I knew you.
No, it is, it is March, and...
Oh, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I look to me, I don't even think our April's necessarily going to align with some of the other districts, so I understand the concern with, you know, staff to have children or, you know, if you have parents. But I, and we did, you know, years ago, before this, you know, when the state didn't mandate, and I thought March was something more focused, because it's all...
Understood. No, I just wanted to make sure I knew there wasn't another issue. Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. So, okay. Now, for those of you who have stayed with us, we do have another section for communication from... Oh, no, we have communication from board members, I apologize. Was there anything left unsaid?
Just a quick question, so thank you for the resolution. Appreciate you doing that. And I want to explore, I think Houston mentioned, there's options for us to perhaps be proactive when it comes to this potential state legislation. So I'm wondering if you have any ideas for us as a board? Do you have any recommendations that maybe we can at least explore at this point?
Well, if I see something, I'll certainly let the board know. I think I've distributed copies of my testimony, at least, to the superintendent, and I think to the whole board.
First of all, yes.
Yes, of course.
And I got Jeff on one, and I got David's on another, and Ellen, you did one. Okay, someone else did one, there was a third one. Oh, you did one, Dan. I think there's another one floating around. Anyway...
Yeah, Jackie did.
But to the extent something gets passed, we should try and make sure that we get put on the list of people who gets considered. Does that mean we're going to be considered? Can't tell you if it will or won't, but if you're not on the list, you definitely won't be considered. Cave certainly watches this stuff, and I keep an eye out. They send me a raft of emails, and although I try not to abuse them, I actually have a lobbyist for other reasons at the General Assembly, and so I ask him to try and let me know stuff. And I literally read the title and statement of purpose of every bill that's been introduced. Although this session has been weird, because they're introducing a lot of major bills as committee bills at the end, which they don't normally do, so that's really weird. But once I realize that, I have to start watching even the stuff at the end. So I'll certainly let you know, and then, you know, if necessary, we can go and testify, as well as submit a written testimony, because it's easy to do the written testimony. You just email it in.
I appreciate your watching, but I think that's my concern. No offense, Houston, you're not like most people. I don't think most people spend the time watching as much as they should.
I'm just saying it's a group effort, and that's just the part I'm doing.
And I agree, and I just think that's my larger concern. What if we didn't have you? What would we have missed? And that's where my concerns are.
If I can, I'm sorry, I was going to mention this before. Thank you, Houston, because you certainly does send anything that may have something to do with public schooling to us. With that said, the, I'd say the given watchers are the folks at the Connecticut Association of Primary School Superintendents at CAPS, and our organizations that are, they also pay lobbyists and so on to keep an eye on all of these in the Bay of Capital, and also Cave from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. So we are updated continually on what is being presented and where they are in committee. So as I receive information that's relevant, I'll continue to forward it on. So I think we do have watchers on the wall, so to speak. I know you're watching.
If we're really concerned, you know, it's easy to hire a lobbyist for a fixed fee for the year and just say, you know, keep an eye out. And, you know, I would have some suggestions as to who you might want to use to make sure you don't break the bank, but it's, as long as you, you know, five thousand dollars is not a big deal. Fifty thousand or a hundred thousand, it is a big deal. But I think it's probably adequately covered. But if you have any suggestions, Jeff, I'd love to have them.
It's just my overall concern and discomfort of what I've seen going on in the last couple of months. And you pointed out, it's not the normal regiment.
Right.
And what made me concerned, even with those first two education bills, they kept changing, "Oh, I'm sorry, that's a typo, it's not..." And it's "or." And, "Oh, it's not supposed to be two thousand, or it's three thousand." And I just feel that we're not getting a clear message, and I'm afraid that if we're not vigilant, something's going to get through. And that's where my concerns are, and I think that this, I'm hearing a lot of those same concerns from constituents.
No, I hear you, and I can tell you that as far as I'm concerned, the moment anyone says, "That's a typo," and I say, "Then show me the amending thing." And I understand the games that can be played, and it's possible to amend without footprints, but I don't think anyone has that power anymore. So I always write it on the bill, and sometimes I have a different interpretation as to what the bill means than even its drafters do. And, you know, we, our strength comes from having nine of us being together. And I'm sure we're going to do that.
So maybe just to clarify my question, I think I'm looking more for opportunities for us to perhaps look at policy or bylaws, something, and maybe not just for this board, maybe in conjunction with other boards, as we discussed, to do something. Because I'm not a Connecticut constitutional scholar. Maybe, I think, probably the closest the state has is the SCU, but I was surprised at the power that the state has over local communities. I don't think there's anything preventing them to do whatever they want at any given time. And am I correct?
Our limited type of constitution, but that's not very limited.
So, yeah, I mean, there's nothing in there that protects us, so to speak, as a community.
Well, actually, our authority to do what we do is given to us by the General Assembly, by the state statutes. So we, as a governing board, have the amount of...
We're in a very precarious position.
Indeed, we are.
Right, which raises my moral alarms.
It wasn't really a joke when I said every man's liberty and property is at risk while the General Assembly is in session. I mean, it's maybe catchy, but it's...
But funny, because it's true.
It is true.
It's sad because it's true.
Anyway, it's also sad because it's true. I think we have done so far, with a lot of help from the community, who turned out in great force at the legislature, we've done as good a job as can be done so far to advocate for our position against regionalization. And if the legislature is so motivated to ignore all of that and go forward with it anyway, then the battle shifts from telling them why they're wrong to giving them a chance to prove why they're wrong. And then the battle is more a matter of looking at the structural and the logistical things that would have to happen, and then looking back at that and say, "Well, there could be things here that the legislature can't do, or doesn't have the authority to do, or doesn't have the money to do." And that's a different way to attack this problem, to see if they really can do this at the end of the day. My experience, you know, when the state merged colleges, they did it because they owned the colleges. They could do anything they wanted to, and there was no one to stand in their way, and whatever they felt like doing, they did. In this case, they don't own us, and we sit here in this building. We don't even own this building. The Board of Education does not own any buildings. The school district does not own any buildings. Well, guess who does? Town of Avon owns the buildings. So there's, there are a lot of ways to look at this, that to make the hills steeper to climb for those who insist on going down this...
climb for those who insist on going down this path anyway. So for the moment, we self-advocate as best we can.
I would agree with you, David, and there's no one who could be more obstructionist with a charming smile than I, I suspect. But also, there's the straightforward answer of, "Don't elect the rascals next time, and undo it legislatively during the next session." I mean, I've had times where amendments have been put in, and then a year or two later we have takeout all the amendments.
Oh, yeah.
So that's a possibility too. So they're political answers, but yes, I agree.
Yeah, some of this could be fixed in subsequent elections, for sure. We can't apply too much pressure in areas where they might be pro-regionalization, but there's certainly not much support for that in the suburbs. So I can't believe there'd be anyone coming from the suburbs who would be voting pro-regionalization either this time or in subsequent years, and I would hope that voters are smart enough to ask that question to candidates now, to make sure that we're getting what we think we're getting when we vote for these people.
Because I routinely tell people, what incentive do I have, or what possible reason do I have to take our success in Avon and dilute it by combining us with another school district? And most people just find that that's a horrifying question, that I would even ask it, but that's my response. I mean, we've got a little gem here, with all due respect, because of all of our collective actions. Not me, it's you primarily, because there are more of you than me, and that, and we're doing a great job, and I don't want to dilute that.
It's just unfathomable, so I'm surprised to see how far along some of this has gone, they're looking at bus routes and things like that, so unfathomable that they're willing to spend our resources, because the money that they have is all of our money, pursuing something that the population, the people that they're there to represent are clearly against, like you said. It's just utterly shocking that they would do that. So is there something, as a board, that we can do? What are some ways we can have, if they come to us, to ask for analysis or research or something, that we can give them, just to keep an eye on how much we're spending towards that?
Spending toward...
Like if they want us to look at bus routes, and they take three or four hours of our administrative staff's time?
Yes, if we get that far down the path, yes.
I'm not so much worried about the cost accounting aspects of that as what they're asking for, because what they're asking for tells you what they're thinking about, and so I would just rather know what is being asked for. So if any surprising requests come into the central office, please let us know.
What I will say is, most of, you know, to your point, Mr. Preaka, that they're asking, that we would think they would ask for, they don't have to ask for. We submit all of the information.
Right, most of what they could possibly want is probably already in the direction they already have.
It's already given to the State Department, no one wants a year.
I could ask you the standing question that I always ask, and no superintendent likes to answer it. Have we received any national security requests?
Have we received any national security?
Correct.
C O D.
No, it's a serious question, because it doesn't happen often, but it does happen, and so...
Not in my time.
Okay, there you go. Because often they tell you, you can't disclose whether you received it or not.
That was going to say...
Yes.
But that's, in fact, a real request. Periodically, I do ask superintendents that question, and luckily, we've never been asked.
Or so she tells you.
Well, no, she said no.
She could say no.
She didn't say, "I can't answer the question."
All right. Anything else, or could we potentially finish early? All right.
Communication.
Oh, well, communication from the public, so anyone who has remained with us, if you'd like to come forward. So Sarah, come on up and let us know your name and your address, please. You can stand or sit, just come a little closer.
Yeah.
Yep, that's, my name's Sarah Boone, and I live at 82 Davertree Hill.
And I guess, first of all, thank you for being an advocate for our families, for our students with the regionalization, we appreciate that. My question or comment, I guess, is more geared towards the AP presentation piece of this. I have a student at the high school and at the middle school, and one of my concerns is that we are removing kind of the middle level classes, so we have more AP classes being added, and we have the, you know, college prep classes, and then we're getting rid of honors courses. So I guess my concern is, I have a son who's a junior, who wants to take physics, he only has two options, and he wants to take three other AP classes, so he feels like, well, I have to take AP physics, I have no more honors physics. So I guess my question, and I've asked Mr. Rankowitz this, is just, what's our rationale kind of behind getting rid of those middle level classes? And if we really want to meet the needs of all of our kids, is getting rid of more levels of classes make sense when we're, you know, we have a lot of concerns about the mental health, I think, of all of our students, it's a big concern that everyone has, and by not meeting the developmental needs of all of our kids, I'm just not sure it makes a lot of sense, and I just, I guess that's my concern, I just wanted to raise it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? Just so you know, generally during comments from the public, we don't respond to them, but we take the information in, and certainly research, and if needed, I'm sure Dr. Carnamal can follow up as well. Anyone else? All right. Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry.
Are you making a comment?
Just, I could contact back, but I believe it wasn't all that long ago, I want to say maybe six months ago, that the department chair from the Science Department came and gave a presentation to us, that gave the rationale for why they were changing the levels, and that's probably in the nuts, it could be found online, I see.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Houston, moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David. You guys are the dynamic duo tonight, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions unanimously. All right, thank you very much for coming.